All right, welcome everybody. It is February first, our first regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. And could we get a roll call?
Councilmember Carol.
Here.
Councilmember Hara.
I'm here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Candell.
I am here.
Mayor Paulson.
Here. Thank you. And for those of you who are able, let's rise and do our pledge of allegiance. So the next item on our agenda tonight is public comment, and this is for any matters not listed on the agenda. We normally have a three minute limit. If there's anybody in the chamber here who'd like to speak, just go on up to the podium and let us know your name and where you live. And we can come back. Allison, is there anyone online who wants to make any comments?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members on Zoom. And there's no public comment.
Okay, great. And let's call anybody here. Looks like that's a no. So we'll close public comment and move on to business or item number three, which is the M C E and City of Larkspur collaborative opportunity presentation proclamation.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor Paulson, members of the city council. My name is Sebastian Khan. I'm a senior community development manager with M C E. And as we enter this new year, I know it's the start of a new month here. We're really just trying to do education and outreach about the number of programs that we offer at M C E. And ways in which we can collaborate together as an M C E member community. So I will give a brief overview of M C E today. As well as some of the customer programs and offerings that are available to the city of Larkspur and its residents and businesses. So I'll go ahead and advance this slide. Now, I think that this will be a message that resonates with the city council, but climate change, we feel at M C E is the biggest threat facing us today. And the reason we do the work that we do to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and produce renewable energy is because we see from an increase in the number of extreme weather events to dramatic health impacts. Climate change is here and it's about more than just the earth getting hotter. Over the past decade, we've seen the impacts of climate change firsthand in our communities. Like extreme weather and the expanded size and scale of devastating wildfires throughout our state. And these impacts are dangerous for many of us, and we need to make every effort we can to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and combat climate change. And in Larkspur, this city council has already demonstrated leadership in this regard by declaring a local climate emergency. And passing your climate action plan in 2021. And as an M C E member community, there's a number of different resources available to the city. They can help Larkspur promote long-term environmental sustainability. And my goal is to help illustrate those opportunities tonight. So who is M C E? We are a not-for-profit public agency. We're a community choice aggregation program. And the city of Larkspur is members of our joint powers authority. And our mission is to confront the climate crisis by eliminating fossil fuel greenhouse gas emissions. And our vision is to lead California to an equitable, clean, affordable and reliable energy economy by serving as a model for community-based renewable energy. So some of this will be not new information to some of you, but if you just want to highlight how electric service works with M C E. We buy and build cleaner energy and give customers the choice of where their energy is coming from. So prior to the C C A model. Folks only had one choice of the generation as to where their power was coming from. And since 2011, in the city of Larkspur residents and businesses have had the option of choosing M C E service or remaining with P G N E. Under the C C A model, P G N E is still involved, so they deliver and transmit the energy. But the end result for the customer is again, that choice as to where the energy is actually coming from, and M C E helps enable that. So M C E started here in Marin in the late 2000s and we launched service in 2010. And you'll see here on the photo is former member of the Marin Board of Supervisors and founding chairman of M C E. The late Charles McClashan, along with our CEO, Don Weiss. And since that time, you know, in 2010, since we began serving customers, we've expanded to 37 different communities throughout the Bay Area. And four different counties. We now serve over 580,000 customers throughout the Bay Area and that model for community energy really started here in Marin and has strong roots in Marin and it's expanded across the state since then. So really proud of that and just wanted to highlight the past and the history to better inform where we're going with regard to climate action. We are a not-for-profit public agency. We're governed by a local board of elected officials. And each city, town, or county that we serve appoints an elected official to represent their community. And our board meets monthly at public meetings to determine policy and administrative decisions for M C E. And here in Larkspur, your representative is Councilmember Haroff, who I know is calling in tonight. So really the benefit of this structure allows for transparency and rate setting. And customer program implementation to best meet community needs. And since 2010, we've really demonstrated clean energy leadership in Marin and throughout the communities that we serve. As this council is probably familiar, Senate Bill 100 aims to require electricity providers to provide 100% carbon-free electricity by 2045. You can see that in the upper right-hand corner. And had a goal of 60% carbon-free electricity by 2030. We met that latter goal 13 years early at M C E. So our standard service option serving customers has been 60, at least 60% greenhouse gas free since that time. And as it stands today, our standard product is 95% greenhouse gas free. So really demonstrating energy leadership and working to achieve those climate action goals. So now that you have a better understanding of M C E and our operations, I did want to highlight M C E and the city of Larkspur. And kind of what the community engagement and outreach looks like here, who we're serving, what that customer base looks like. And so we'll dive in with that. So you'll see here that about 83% of all eligible electric customers here in Larkspur are served by M C E. 4.1% of those customers are enrolled in our deep green product, which is our 100% renewable service. Which the city opted all of their municipal accounts into, I believe in 2017. So this building that we're in right now is you know, being served by 100% renewable energy, which is great. A little bit more about the customer demographics here in Larkspur, about 8% of folks are enrolled in CARE, which is the California Alternate Rates for Energy Program. It's a statewide program that gives folks about a 35% monthly bill discount. So always encouraging folks to sign up for that to help with bill relief. In addition to our standard energy offerings, there are a number of customer programs that we're able to offer at M C E. One of which being electric vehicle charging infrastructure rebates. And really pleased to say that in Larkspur, there's been 14 of those rebate reservations available through M C E submitted to date. I'll get into that a little bit later about the customer program offerings, but did want to highlight that number here. And since 2011, since we've been serving customers in Larkspur, there's been nearly 11,000 metric tons of carbon reduced through M C E's electric generation services here in Larkspur.
I'm sorry, would you, if we have questions, do you want us to ask you now or are we till the end?
Um.
For you.
Whatever's easier for you. We could, I only have a couple more slides if you want to wait.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll do that.
No.
I'll wait till the end.
That's fine. So just a little bit about the local outreach and engagement efforts in Larkspur and throughout Marin County. So as a joint powers authority, one of the things that we do is have staff like myself that partner with our member communities on their climate action planning. So one of the ways in which we do that with the city of Larkspur already is by participating in the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership. This is a group that meets on a monthly basis. It's typically sustainability planners and folks that work in public works departments that are actually working to implement climate action plans. And it's really a forum for us to meet together. And address climate action goals throughout the county. So really proud to participate in that. We also serve on the board of Marin Can, Marin Community Action Network, which is the organization that was formed out of Drawdown Marin. In addition to that, we're members of the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce, which allows us to connect with small businesses and demonstrate our customer offerings to that customer segment. You know, we've partnered with community groups to do E V and e-bike shows. And we even developed a youth climate education toolkit that's available to middle school and high school students for them to learn more about climate action. And engage with agencies like M C E. So some of the community benefits, I think when I described the local board of directors model. Part of the benefit of that is the ability to work with staff to implement and develop programs that best meet community needs. And so I want to talk a little bit about that. With you all. This is not a full picture and it shouldn't be treated as an exhaustive list, but these are some of the programs that we offer at M C E. That are available to the city of Larkspur. We have energy efficiency programs that include audits and rebates for local businesses. We do have that electric vehicle charging rebate program that I mentioned that I'll dive into a little bit deeper. Energy resiliency programs, working with customers to shift load away from those peak periods, four to nine P M. So that they can save money and support grid health. Electrification programs, we partner with Bayren and the county for a heat pump, water heater rebate. And then always centering equity at our work, we do have a group at M C E called the Community Power Coalition, which allows us to connect with nonprofit organizations and help them inform our programs at M C E. Again, the discount programs that I mentioned a little bit earlier, these are all programs that are run through the state of California that are eligible for residents in the city of Larkspur that can help them with bill relief. Our charging program that I've mentioned offers since the city of Larkspur is a deep green customer already, $3,500 per charging port available through M C E. That can also be coupled with a rebate through TAM, the Transportation Authority of Marin. And so if the city has an interest in installing more E V charging infrastructure, there are rebates and technical assistance available through M C E. And then here's just a couple of our commercial programs and offerings. We do have a local feed-in tariff program that allows local solar developers to sell energy that they're generating directly back to M C E at a fixed rate of return. Again, we have energy efficiency and demand response programs, so offering incentives to businesses to shift load away from that four to nine P M window. And we do have what's called the Strategic Energy Management Program. This is really a behavioral change program where we work with facilities managers at local businesses and industrial customers to make small changes within their daily operations, you know, fixing lighting, pre-cooling a building on a hot summer day. So that they can lower their bill and their energy impact. And that is an overview of the presentation. I welcome any questions from the city council and yeah, I'm encouraged to work with you all and know that M C E is a resource for your climate action planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, I think you had a question.
Whoops. Whoa. Yeah.
But. I have actually a few questions. First of all, directing your attention to the chart you gave us on page six, which says 4.1% are enrolled in the deep green program. My question is why? It seems like everybody would want to be enrolled in that program for environmental reasons. Is it more expensive? What is the reason that that's such a low number?
Yeah, great question.
Maybe we should practice. Maybe we might ask how we compare to others. First, because maybe we're not that low.
Well, I'm not saying compared to others, maybe we're, you know, leading the charge, but still, if it's 100% clean energy and it's the same energy, why wouldn't somebody do that unless there's some incentive not to? Being higher prices or some reason not to, I guess is the question.
Yeah, great question. And I do want to acknowledge the city manager's question as well, just comparatively how Larkspur stacks up. We do have a 2% adoption rate, give or take, across our service area. Here in Marin, there's not a community that exceeds 10%. That would be the city of, the town of Fairfax, rather. They're at about nine and a half percent. So comparatively, it's not an incredibly low number, but in the grand scheme of things, when you're looking at all the customers that we serve. I think the reason that folks are not enrolling in deep green is a number of different things. I think a lot of folks see their energy bill and maybe are not paying as much attention to the individual line items that are on it and are literally just looking at the total cost. It is one cent per kilowatt hour more to opt in to deep green, and that translates to about five or six dollars a month for the average residential customer. So there is, there is a cost element as well. I will say, one of the policy decisions that our board of directors made in August of last year was that for all new accounts beginning in January of 2023, they will be automatically enrolled in deep green as our standard offering. So that means anytime you start a new P G N E service account, let's say you move addresses and need to start a new connection, that account would be deep green. And so we anticipate those numbers to go up quite a bit for this year. It is a one-year pilot and we're going to assess what that looks like at the end of the year, but um, yeah, I think it's been a longstanding goal of M C E to get to 100% renewable energy. And this is just one way that we're trying to do that.
The mayor indulged a question from the city manager as a follow-up.
Of course.
Um. I recently was made aware, actually by the city attorney, that Berkeley, working with its community choice aggregation entity in the East Bay made the default option for all Berkeley residents, including existing customers, their equivalent of deep green. Has that been discussed at all as an option for communities to consider in M C E? Because that might substantially raise those numbers.
Yeah, it hasn't been a topic of conversation at this point. There are a number of community choice programs that have done that across the state, Berkeley being one of them. That's something that our board of directors could consider, but have not this time. I'm sorry.
I got lots of questions, but if anybody else.
Yeah, a couple of things. I live in a mobile home community. We have three where there's, we're sub-metered. So they read, we have meters, but they're read by the park and then they bill us. And I know we're able to take advantage of the care program, but I don't recall ever getting anything about deep green. So does it apply to those situations where there's a and we might have apartment complexes, this applies to too, where the the sub-metered person can apply for this?
I'm not totally sure.
I know. It's a weird question, I know. But if you could get back to me on it.
I can.
Now that I'd be interested. The other thing was, I'm kind of curious, who are the 17% that are not enrolled? Is that primarily in M C E services? That primarily residential, commercial?
I don't have the specific breakdown, but acknowledging the customer base in Larkspur, I would venture to say most of your customers are residential. You know, M C E is an opt-out model. That's part of the state legislation that enables C C As to exist. And so that 17% of folks largely would have opted out when we launched service in 2011.
Hmm.
Um, that number is pretty standard for Marin. I would say I believe on average, we're serving about 85% of residents, the lowest member community in Marin that we serve is about 74% enrolled in M C E service. So Larkspur is doing comparatively, you know, in the middle of things, I would say.
Well, I'm just curious, is there, you have metrics where you can identify who those 17% are? I mean, are they apartment complexes? You know, particular shopping center, you know, commercial corridor. Is there a way for, do you have the information to be able to tell that kind of information? Cause I'm thinking in terms of future planning, it might be something you know, that we might modify our zoning or planning regulations to encourage people if we know what market we're trying to target.
Yeah, great questions. There are some customer confidentiality reasons.
I wouldn't want names and addresses, just type of business or type of, you know, is it apartments versus single-family home and that kind of data, very, you know, gross.
I'm not sure off the top of my head. I'd be happy to look into it though.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, can I just follow up on that? The 17% that are not enrolled in M C E. Is that because, so you said there was a one cent difference between the deep green and the normal green M C program? Is there another price difference between the M C normal green and the normal P G N E?
Yes, there is. So we don't always claim to be cheaper than P G N E. We've been at parity for about 50% of the time of our operation. There is two options that you can choose from. There's deep green, which is that one cent per kilowatt hour more. And there's our standard light green product, which is less expensive than that. Right now, the light green offering is less expensive than P G N E's and for the entirety of the time that we've been serving customers for 13 years, our generation rates have always been lower than P G N E's. So I'm not saying total bill, but the actual cost to procure and provide that energy through M C E has been cheaper.
All right, so let me ask a question. And this is, you know, hypothetically, let's say this city council had this desire to reach 90% deep green, whatever it is. And we said, we are going to embark on a, an education. You know, try to promote this to people. Maybe even some type of subsidy. If you're talking about a penny a kilowatt hour, maybe we would be able to incentivize people to switch over. Have cities tried that? What seems to be the thing in your opinion? Okay, if our goal was to maximize the number of people using the deep green program, what would you recommend that we do in order to get that transition?
Great question. Yeah, I think to answer the first part of that question about what other cities have done, the town of Fairfax, several years back, received a grant, I believe, through the air district to subsidize residences, 100 residences, I think it was for a year. And what they saw was a lot of those customers did not return to that standard light green product.
Correct.
Um. And perhaps not consequently, they have the highest adoption rates of M C E deep green in our service area. I think it's really just about education and outreach, you know, if the city council and staff were to work with M C E to educate folks about deep green, that's something that we could do. Um. And I think it's just really about meeting folks where they're at and helping them understand their bills and at M C E, there's resources to do that. So open to collaborative ideas.
So if wanted to hypothetically have, you know, you know, there was an event. You know, whatever that event was, and we wanted M C E to present and to explain things, hand out flyers, you know, whatever it happens to be. That would be something that would be a possible collaboration.
Yeah, that's, that's my job. That's what I do. I would say that really this year, I think the pilot deep green program is going to drive those adoption rates higher. And I think at the end of this year, we'll see higher rates, but we're always open to opportunities like that as well.
Okay. I have some other questions. Is anyone, okay, sorry. Your electrification program, I'm assuming that is a transition from natural gas to electric, is that right?
Yeah, we have a couple of different rebates and incentives that help with folks electrifying in the home. There's the $1,000 heat pump rebate that I mentioned. Um, there's a lot of programs geared towards multifamily housing, where we can work with property owners to install things as simple as more energy efficient windows or insulation. There's a kind of a cheeky saying within the energy industry, but the cheapest or the the cleanest energy is the energy you don't use. So really encouraging energy efficiency in that regard. Um. So yeah, those are some of the programs that we offer.
So we have a gentleman that calls in a lot when we talk about the conversion from gas to electric. That about the difference in price that natural gas is still a lot cheaper than electric. Is that accurate as far as you know? And do you know what the price difference is?
I don't off the top of my head. I think when it comes to transitioning to all electric, there is more upfront costs with doing that inside of the building, right? A heat pump, water heater is going to cost you more than a gas furnace replacement. With products being more energy efficient, folks will save on their energy bills in the long term. And I think that there's an opportunity cost associated with electrification that we can't ignore. You know, the building sector accounts for so much percentage of our G H G emissions. Whereas the electric grid in California is only accounting for about 14% of our emissions. It's largely in the building sector. And so if there are ways to impact climate change tangibly in the local community, it's through some of those building electrification efforts.
Okay. Um, I had one more question, actually. One of the things that you said was also regarding selling energy back to M C E. Is that different than selling it back to P G N E? And I know there's the NEM two, NEM three change coming and different rates for selling it back. Could you explain? I mean, if somebody wanted to sell it back to M C E as opposed to P G N E, I mean, I wasn't aware that people had choices. How does that work?
Yeah, sure. Well, the program that I was referring to in the slide deck was our feed and tariff program, which is specifically geared towards solar developers that want to build a solar plant. They want to sell that energy back to M C E that's available to them. On a residential and a commercial scale with folks that have rooftop solar, we do have what's called a net energy metering tariff, similar to what P G N E has. Some of the key distinctions with that is the way that I think if you're familiar with solar and kind of how the compensation process works. P G N E will give you what's called an annual true-up where they reconcile everything that you generated versus used and give that back to you in a check at the end of the year. We do the same thing, but what we do is account for everything on a monthly basis instead. And so there is less of an opportunity for someone to let's say their solar was not producing as much. With M C E's program, we are able to compensate customers in a way that makes them more whole. And I'm not explaining this.
Well, it makes sense.
Topic, and I'm happy to provide more information about.
I guess my general questions are if somebody wanted to sell power back to M C as opposed to P G N E. How do, I wasn't even aware that was possible. How does that happen? And just are the rates that M C E sells it back similar to the rates that P G N E buys it back for?
Yes, to both.
Okay.
And I can send you as a follow-up, our net energy metering tariff, which explains some of that in more detail.
Okay, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask you, I think Councilman Vice Mayor Candell's questions are some clarifying, I think it'd be great. If a person has put rooftop solar, are they autumn in their M C customer? Are they automatically enrolled with M C for the selling of their energy? Or do they have to do something to do?
They are, yeah. They would need to opt out of M C E service.
To sell it to P G N E.
Correct.
Okay, so, so for a lot of our residents, since they're M C customers in all likelihood, for other than that 17%. Their solar is going to you as it is. Okay.
Thank you for those answers. Appreciate it.
I should have, I should have led with that piece. I think that was more helpful. So thank you. City manager, appreciate it.
Uh, Councilmember Haroff, did you have any questions? You're on mute. Oh, your hands up. You do have questions.
No, it's, it was, it was up. I was just kind of responding reacting to the back and forth here. It's important to keep in mind that, again, the vast majority of Larkspur residents are M C customers because they have made that decision to be customers over time. So you have to keep in mind that for those customers, none of the electricity that they receive is P G N E sourced electricity. It's all M C E sourced electricity. And the only role that P G N E It's all M C sourced electricity, and the only role that P G D plays with respect to that customer is to provide trans. Essentially transportation services, distribution services over their wires. Um, they're not, they're not getting involved at all in the the provision of electrical resources. Um, so that's the way it works. You get the power from M C. If you're generating power at your own home. Um, that power is going to go back to M C pursuant to the arrangements that are set up. This does it. Sebastian, I got into a little bit.
Great, uh, yes, Councilmember Carol.
I'm just curious, this is a government agency that we're a part of. If I walked in. Oh, I wish I could tomorrow and to and applied for a permit for a new furnace, water heater. Uh, upgrade to my electrical in any way. To the planning department, would I be given brochures or information about this program and the rebates and? About signing up for green and deep green?
So if you walk in, which are very few people do anymore to pull a permit, they just are doing it more and more online.
Yeah.
Um, if you walk in, there's quite a bit of material available to. For all sorts of rebates and programs that are various utility programs offer. I can't guarantee that if I walk over there right now, it's. The latest version that M C's published, but it's whatever we last received is available.
Whereas, so most of it is being done online now, would you say?
The vast majority of our permits are now being pulled online.
And is there a way for us to provide that information when? Uh, the department's corresponding back to them, like if they issue the, when they issue the permit or when they issue?
So right now, we're upgrading the entire website, and I actually had a meeting today with one of our staff people. And one of the things he's building is an entire section on sustainability, and I think it'll include. I I know it includes links to a lot of these agencies, and I think as he builds it out. He'll link it to the building page so that somebody who's on the building division page would know they could click here to find out more about.
Is there a way that it could be set up so that they would have to click through it? To show they've at least seen it before they proceed in the application. I'm trying to think of a way.
Yeah, so you have to remember, you have to bear in mind that very few residents pull permits.
Now, it's.
Contractors pull permits about, I don't have a percentage, but I'm going to speculate it's. It's eighty to a hundred percent of the permits are pulled by a contractor. So we might be spending energy targeting the wrong audience. Although I happen to know from from. Other presentations, the heat pump rebate, which is a really good rebate, is actually to the contractor, not to the. Customer, and it's specifically to make sure that contractor is aware of that opportunity.
Well, I don't want to do, you know, a whole burden on the our staff, but it it could something be like when someone applies for a permit, we notify them. And the agent, their agency does the work in contacting either the homeowner or the contractor. Is that possible?
I'll have to get back to, we notify a lot of the utilities. I don't know that we have had that ever as a discussion with M C E. That it permits being pulled because it doesn't really affect them on an infrastructure level, whereas most utilities. That need to be notified, there's an infrastructure element of what's happening.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't have an answer with respect to this particular agency and I'll have to get back to. My only comment back on the permit, I'm not opposed to, but I will tell you also our crankiest customers are the contractors, and I think. Adding layers to their ability to pull permits.
Right.
Probably won't be received very well.
Well, putting the burden on them is always better than putting it on our our people, but you know, I think it's an obvious way. To reach a very targeted audience, and if you get that contractor once, you're gonna, he's gonna have that in mind. For his future projects, not just here in Larkspur, but throughout the county. And I think, you know, that's a very effective marketing tool. For your program. Thank you.
Let's go. Sorry, last one. The the uh, the rates, uh, P G and E's rates for selling energy back to P G and E going up. April first, the NEM two to the NEM three, is that just a P G and E specific thing, or does that apply to to you as well? Uh, it's an abbreviation for, you can explain, I don't know the exact.
You can think of it as the means by which customers sell energy back to the utility. It stands for net energy metering. Is the name of the tariff. Councilmember, I I would need to get back to you on the specifics of how the NEM arrangement works with M C, and I'm happy to follow up.
If you put that on your list of things to follow up with me, that'd be perfect.
Yes. It's a very complicated topic, net energy metering, and I I don't want to misspeak for it, so. I will get back to you with that info. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I I also don't want to get in the weeds, but the reason, the the reason for the change. For folks who follow that debate is concerns that uh ratepayers are not participating in solar. Have been subsidizing solar customers receiving that. That incentive to go solar and um equity issues were brought up at the California P U C. About this, and the ultimate compromise was the introduction of NEM three, so. Um, its purpose is to to reduce some of that subsidy. So for solar customers. Once N M three is in place, your net benefit is less than if you're on the N M two program.
Great, and I think Councilmember Way didn't have any questions. I've I have one question. Um, I'm wondering about availability, you know, slash reliability. So, you know, I I think um one of the. Old concerns is, you know, you generate power from wind. What if it's not windy? You generate from solar. What if it's cloudy? Um, and I know there are batteries and so forth. Um, so two questions. One is, um. What if we were to get more deep green adoption and, you know, you know, increase all our metrics for even light green? Uh, is there any studies that show whether there's capacity? You know, to to keep up and and maybe you can also comment on, you know, what what's going on now, like have we experienced, you know, with all the? Rain and stuff. I mean, there was a lot of wind, but not a lot of sun. I mean, has there been downtime? Is there capacity?
I would say that there is existing capacity, and I think that that's been studied by our procurement team at M C E. Um, in advance of our board approving that new deep green policy while we're all new customers are being enrolled. That's probably the largest push that we've seen to enroll new customers in deep green. And they had to ensure that there was power to do that. And so. It's our power resources seems understanding that yes, there is capacity to allow for additional demand in deep green at this time.
Okay, and one more is about the, you know, sort of elasticity of demand. So if, you know, many people convert, do you think the prices will go up?
Well, our prices are set on a yearly basis by our board of directors, so we only change our rates once a year. That's something that our board could could consider. But again, our our role as a joint powers authority, a public agency is to keep our rates as cost competitive and as low as possible for our customers. So. With that in mind, I'm not sure that they would increase drastically.
Okay, fair enough. Um, good, and if there are no other questions, um, uh, I'm sorry, yes, public comment. And Kevin raised hands.
Yeah, but I can wait till I, I mean, I, whichever order you prefer.
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
No, I just wanted to, uh, uh, in response to, I think, the last uh interaction. Um, against this, I'm on the, I'm a member of the board of M C. And I'm also on a number of different um, uh. Technical related committees in rate setting committees. Um, and I just want to assure everybody that an awful lot of time is spent. Within those committees and on the board as a general matter uh to deal with issues of resource adequacy. To make sure that the power that is being procured by M C E clean energy is not only power that is needed for immediate needs. But that the resources are available through M C E and the procurement arrangements that have been made by M C E. Whether it be with a wind or solar or other supplier. Um, uh, to make sure that those those expectations are fully met in a very, very robust way. I think M C does a better job on resource adequacy than any other C C A in the state of California. And then before we go to public comment, maybe this is a good time, you know, again, because I am a member of the board. Um, and I spent a lot of time working on board related matters. I want to make sure that the the council members. As well as members of the public, um, view me as a resource for funneling questions that they may have. In settings other than the one that we have tonight, for example, where we have somebody from M C coming specifically to talk about their operations. Um, that's part of the job that I have uh as uh Larkspur's representative on on the board, and I'm happy to talk about. Uh, issues that affect the relationship between M C and the city of Larkspur and its residents at any time.
Great, thank you, sir. Um, so I believe, uh, city manager, we do open for public comment on a proclamation or a.
Presentation, it's the discretion of the mayor.
Yeah.
Want to entertain.
Yeah, I I think that'd be nice. I I think we only have four people in the audience and two here, one, uh, any? Public comment, anybody interested in uh making a comment here?
And I'm looking for any raised hands in the Zoom audience, and there's no public comment.
Okay. So with that, um, Sebastian, thank you so much. Very informative. Thanks for taking our barrage of questions and. Uh, yeah, we look forward to studying the issue more, so thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could also add to that and and express my personal thanks to Sebastian for coming, he's going around and making the rounds. Through cities throughout um the service area of M C and and does a terrific job. And he also represents um M C, uh, as he mentioned, um, in a variety of other different settings, including Marin Can, where he and I are. Are both on the board, so uh M C is a, is a, is a valued member. Uh, of our community and appreciate very much the contribution that they make.
Great, well, thank you very much. Okay, so uh with the conclusion of um item number three, let's move to the consent calendar, item number four. And um, tonight we have four items and I'll. First, see if anybody in the public wants to remove an item from the consent calendar for further discussion or questions.
I'm looking for any raised hands in our Zoom audience, and there's no comment.
Okay, and anybody in the chamber? Looks like that's no, so um any council member uh want to remove an item? Okay, so we will remove four point four. Any others? Uh, could I get a motion to?
Uh, I'll second the motion.
Great, so we have a a motion in a second for four point one to four point three. Allison, could we get a roll call?
Councilmember Carol.
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, so let's move to four point four, uh, Councilmember Way.
Uh, yes, thank you, um, uh, mayor. I wanted to pull this. I know, um. Unless the city manager has a lengthy staff report, I think it speaks for itself, but.
Perhaps for the benefit of the public, though, that may not have the agenda in front of them. Item four point four is a resi- a resolution to acknowledge that the Commons Foundation. Has um set as its goal to try to raise a million dollars uh beyond the money they've already raised. Uh, this money would be earmarked for landscaping and other outdoor amenities that. Um, otherwise probably will be pretty modest in the budget that we have available from. The prior fundraising and the state grant.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to uh take the opportunity to uh once again acknowledge with gratitude. Um, the Commons Foundation and the extraordinary work they've done in the last several years um to create a public private partnership. For us to build um a dream library and community center. Um, they, the city successfully obtained six point two million dollars in state grants, and the Commons Foundation has already raised over five million dollars. Which is spectacular for us um as a city and as a community. And this um resolution is the opportunity that once again we can support them in their efforts to continue to fundraise. For many of the expenses that a new building like this is going to, um, will incur, including landscaping, plantings, bicycle and pedestrian amenities. Uh, water features and lighting consistent with the design. And la- and lastly, I'd like to thank um the new board, which has stepped forward in the year twenty twenty three. Anne Morrison, our colleague, who is a retired city council member, is now the board uh president for the Commons Foundation. Uh, Kathy Green, John Elenswig, uh Cindy Winship, Jeannie Friedel and Brock Wagstaff have stepped up to join this board. Um, long term members of our and some new members to our community. Um, Brock, I think Brock Wagstaff has been living here in Larkspur. He's one of your neighbors for forty something, forty five years, so. We have a a really deep bench on the board coming forward. Um, and I continue to look forward to working with the Commons Foundation and to um seeing the rest of our colleagues working with them. That's all. And I I will now move uh four point four if there is no further comment.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Allison, can we get a roll call for four point four?
Councilmember Carol.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Candell.
Yes.
Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for that acknowledgement. I feel sometimes we can't thank them enough for a really incredible fundraising effort. So let's move to item number five, the city manager's oral report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'll be very brief. Um. First, I wanted to remind the council, we've uh posted notices on our website. We broadcast it. Through our various social media outlets and um. We'll be doing a second round of announcements here when we send out a memo to serve as an agenda. Document that next week on the eighth, you'll be holding a special meeting, and the purpose of that meeting will be to um. Discuss eviction protections, tenant protections. And that forum is a, an open public forum that councils express its desire to focus on hearing from the public about those topics. Um, we're sort of dealing with that now on a parallel track with our discussions about rent stabilization, but uh as you've heard me say. On a number of occasions, most communities ultimately resolve both, both of those questions at the same time, so this will allow us to stay on track to potentially do that. Um, and so that's at six thirty uh next week and um. You can go to our website to get all the details uh about attending here in person or attending online. Uh, other than that, I just wanted um. Acknowledge that um our staff, we were talking earlier about going online. Uh, we're now operating with a new online system for community development. Uh, so our permit issuing system is actually in this century for the first time. Um, and so, uh, funny enough, as as. Sometimes frustrated as our contractors have been, they've all learned how to use. The system, so uh because every city has sort of this base interface, even if they're using a different product, so. They're actually very happy that we finally, I think we're the last Marin city of significant size to to put this in place, so. I want to thank Elise Simonian and her staff. Um, it's a lot of work. We've actually been working to launch this system. Um, it predates her. We've been, uh, it it's a long process. Most cities, it takes a year to eighteen months. We took a little longer. Since our entire planning staff retired in the middle of the project. But um, I want to thank them. I know it must be running relatively smoothly. Because I'm not getting complaints, and that's usually my number one metric. Um, so I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that her her staff has put into that. Um, and then lastly. At your next meeting, we'll bring a short discussion item to discuss the fact that the governor is lifting the. Uh, emergency orders related to COVID uh as of the end of this month. And so that will affect what options you have to conduct business online and in person. Um, I've been doing my best to let every J P A I'm on or that I work with a lot. I've been making sure that's ending up on their agendas, but as you go to your meetings, I encourage you, if if you don't see it on an agenda, ask. If it can be added, because it should be a discussion, what you want to do. It shouldn't be a foregone conclusion. You still do have options. And we'll talk about that at your next meeting, but um, you know, it should be your choice as as the the board. To how you want to conduct your business when the new rules kick in on March first. So we'll have that next meeting. Um, and for those of you on police and fire, I know you'll be talking about it next week. So get a preview. Uh, with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions for the city manager? Yeah, well, I want to thank you for the online, uh, getting everything online. I feel. Yeah, well, I want to thank you for the online, getting everything online. I feel like now we have smooth roads with Measure B and now we have. Twenty-first century permitting system, so kudos.
Well, if I can have one more moment, I'll acknowledge how hard the city clerks worked for several years. We have most of our documents are now. Available, searchable online. So those of you might be contemplating a public records act request. You don't need to, you can probably get the information faster if you just go into the system and retrieve it yourself.
Yeah, thank you, Allison. Kudos. Okay, so if we don't have any questions, let's move on to council member or reports and comments. Any council members? Have anything to report?
The first one was the Transportation Authority of Marin. I had my first meeting with them. And I kept quiet, pretty much, except for the last item that I mentioned. That we're going to vote on an item that the public comment period had not closed yet. Which I took objection to and said to several other members. It was item eleven, which was they were deprogramming and reprogramming. It's a very technical. Thing, but the point being, there was still three days left of public comment and I didn't feel comfortable. Finalizing something that the public hadn't finally had their chance to have a say. So the majority agreed and so it's been put off, but the two items I listed in the written report. I submitted tonight. One thing I'm not a hundred percent clear on. Is the Bellum Boulevard offering a project and how that relates to the Highway one oh one five eighty connector, if that's the same project. Or something entirely different, but I have a meeting Friday. With the director of TAM and I'll get more details on that. I did just get an update yesterday afternoon. Is they are going to have a Zoom briefing February twenty-second. On the one oh one five eighty connector. I think the release of the funds. That were being held up from the bridge stalls is probably going to spur some action and I think Dick Spotswood wrote a column about it that. You know, waiting till twenty thirty to start digging is. Not, especially with all the housing issues we're facing on that quarter. It's just, so something I'll make sure everyone keeps on top of. About the whole Redwood Highway project. This is very bizarre. Julian was at the meeting and piped in and. Essentially, the stretch of roadway is actually under county jurisdiction. So we have the county is controlling our roads. Port of Madera controls our sewer. I mean, this is. It's getting very interesting, but Julian's been a great help. And so hopefully we'll get some movement on that. And number two was the last Saturday's. Lion Dance outside, which was a lot of fun. As I quote the the. Comment about the year of the rabbit, that we have quiet confidence and moved to a goal. No matter what negativity others give us, I think is a good goal for this council. I was hoping that the lion dance would cure some of the ails of this building. But no luck, I think we're, it only applies to people, not physical objects. So that's my report.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, please.
I have two things. The first is since I've kind of coming out of my bereavement leave, I have been attending the Project Home Key meetings again. As the Community Advisory Committee Representative, one of ours, and I'm on the Subcommittee for Public Safety. And so that Subcommittee, I've now attended twice in January and we're meeting again tomorrow. And part of what that Subcommittee is really looking at at this point, I did miss some meetings, is. To try to draft a proposal for a community services officer or not officer liaison. Who would be an individual or individuals who would. Work at the as the ambassador between the residents of the. Of the Project Home Key residences and the community. And this is a proposal that this Subcommittee is working on. And to present it to the greater committee. So this Subcommittee, I I believe is going to be meeting once a week or once every other week for about an hour and. Tomorrow will be another meeting, so I'll keep you updated. The CAG, which is the large group, doesn't meet until two more weeks from now. And I have not attended since before Thanksgiving because of reasons. So the second part, and if you have any questions about where Project Home Key is going, I'll get more information in a couple of weeks. Since I haven't attended their regular meetings since November. And then the last thing is Central Marin Police has announced that this is their tenth anniversary. And they are going to do some activities later on in the summer, but they have put out their tenth anniversary. Patch and badge that they're going to be wearing all year. They formed the merger of the of the Central Marin Police. From the Twin Cities Police in two thousand thirteen when we added San Salmo. So just keep a lookout for our officers and compliment them on their designed ten-year anniversary badge. That's all.
Thank you. I actually had a quick question, Councilmember Way. On the public safety part of Home Key. Is it Episcopal Services that's managing? And I forget the name of the. Is there discussion about, you know, I'm thinking back to the concerns that came up in twenty twenty-two. Largely about tenant management, you know, people who are there. Is that something that's being worked through right now?
The committee that I'm sitting on is looking at what is the external role that a possibly an ambassador who can work within the neighborhood. And the safe routes to school and the children and the school community, and that would be external to the internal workings. The internal. Process of engaging with residents and. Needs of residents and behavior issues that may arise of residents will be taking place inside and that's separate. Than what this is envisioned by this committee to be an additional, an additional employee who would be more of the liaison between the neighborhood. So it hasn't been, from what I understand, and like I said, I haven't attended in the last couple of months, it. They're still looking at a funding proposal for who would fund this. Between the county and the Economic Society that's running the Project Home Key, so. Still a lot to come.
And one more is is the Mobile Crisis Unit. I believe it was a forty-hour-a-week service. Have they expanded that or is that?
That's not involved with this, so I think maybe the city manager knows more about that, but. The law enforcement component of where this sits, this residential facility sits is. And who sit on the CAG, which is a community advisory group, are is a combination of our Central Marin Police, the Park. Rangers who patrol the Hal Brown Park area and the Sheriff's Department. So they're working at a collaborative. Law enforcement discussion. So this small Subcommittee I am on is more looking at drafting. And creating a potential ambassador for the neighborhood. So I think the meeting, just one last follow-up, the meeting that's happening tomorrow is actually at Central Marin Police. Authority Building and I believe the supervisor has invited some law enforcement to speak at that. For this Subcommittee. I don't believe it's open to the public, so this is a Subcommittee.
Thank you, Councilmember Way. Scott, Kevin, any anything and reports?
Not today, thanks.
Okay, great. I have just a couple of brief ones. I, as you know, Councilmember Carol, I'm new on a transportation on the smart board and I. Vowed not to give you smart trivia, but only things that matter for Larkspur. So the only thing that really came up was that there's a. Youth free summer ride program that's going to be running from June one to August thirty-first. So any. Kid from age five to eighteen will be able to ride smart free the entire summer. So I really. You know, I think that benefits Larkspur, benefits, you know, Marin in general and Sonoma. One more piece, which is maybe smart trivia. One of the big, big, you know, pushes in the strategy has been for expansion. And just to run the top line and bottom line numbers, they need two hundred and thirty-one million dollars to expand smart. To Windsor and Healdsburg. And I looked up the populations that would be serving an additional twenty-six K and twelve K, you know, thirty-eight K people. And two thirty-one needed and you've probably seen it in the I J. There was a lot of news and so forth. So now they have one hundred and eighteen million in funding. They've gotten it from R M three, O Bag, T R C P, all kinds of different alphabet soups of funding. And they're looking for that last amount. So I was pretty quiet, but I think that's, you know, really one of the big, you know, buzzes right now at the smart. And the and the last piece is the housing element. I also want to, you know, thank our, you know. Elise Simonian for an outstanding job and also my fellow council member Kevin Haroff. We've been sitting on many of these meetings and. They're often very technical and anecdotally, my neighbor that Councilmember Way mentioned is is an architect of many years. I'm like, if you're having questions, you know, pity me, but but I've come really with three top-line priorities and I think we've been working on this as a committee. One is. Is can we, when we deliver the housing element, say that we've meaningfully incentivized affordability? You know, I would love to see more affordable housing in Larkspur and I'm wondering to what extent we can affect that through this policy document. And the second is, I think all eleven cities in Larkspur. Have a special identity in their downtown. You know, ours is historic and, you know, can we create zoning, objective design standards, whatever it is. To ensure that the downtown remains as beautiful and charming as as can be. And then last is, you know, sort of flippily put glibly is, you know, let's let's not create Frankenstein. So I, you know, I went to my favorite architect Brock Wagstaff. He showed me a drawing and I said, that's beautiful. Can you make me an ugly one? And then see if it passes the objective design standard. So, you know, I I hope we, you know, I'm doing this for the benefit of fellow council members because it's hours and hours of meeting and. Three hundred sixty pages, which became one hundred sixteen. I've tried to read them all and and it's, it's, you know, really, I think. At the top level, we want to feel we served the community. And so, you know, for those who are listening as well, that's that's what the. Steering Committee is trying to accomplish here. So with that, if we don't have any other reports, let's move to item number seven, which is public hearings and we have none. So that will take us to item eight, which is our mid-year budget review with Director Orm. Kathy, welcome.
So. Kathy, you want to say something? Go ahead. So we're coming to you this evening with what might be the shortest mid-year budget item we've ever had. So. Normally you'd have a staff report with a significant discussion of making amendments to the budget. The council, I'm sure, is well aware, I know is well aware, and the public may not be, that. Within each fund that the city has, we practice what's called bottom-line accounting, meaning. I have the discretion, that really means Kathy, because she's the brains, has the discretion to move money around. To make it all work at the end of the year, as long as the fund. Balances against budget, the fact that we made a decision to run negative in one line is okay if we ran positive in an offset. Line. So we do that a lot. And so for the first time since I've been here, I think Kathy and I looked out across. All the reports we got from the departments and what's showing in the financial system. And realized that we're on track to bottom-line the entire budget, that we don't need to. Ask you to make an amendment, potentially pull something out of reserves to meet our bottom-line goals. And so I just wanted to briefly explain that to you and explain why. And so I did a few slides that are probably mostly an outline and a crutch for my purposes. But the probably the biggest reason is despite the changes that are occurring in the economy and the stressors that may all be putting on us. As individuals, the city is enjoying revenues that are matching our budget. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Trends in municipal finance. In California have a lag in them, so sometimes we're still experiencing a positive economy. From six months ago or or even a year ago in our revenue streams that will eventually catch up with us, but it's also. We're a property tax-based city. The vast majority of our revenues comes from property tax. And despite the changes in the economy, that hasn't really translated into. A downward push in property value. So that's been good news for Larkspur. What we have seen is probably the first signs of a slowing of sales. In our community, which could be actually as much about available supply as it could be about changes in the economy. So. When when properties change hands, we get a fee, a property tax transfer. Fee is paid and so we might see some dip there, but we're not seeing it yet. So because our revenues are tracking the way they are, we looked out across. Expenditures and expenditures never run exactly how you thought they were going to run, but they're amazingly close this year. At least at this point. So I wanted to talk briefly about some of what's going on on the expenditure side to give you a sense of why we feel so comfortable telling you. That at least in on February first, we think we're going to be able to bottom-line the budget and what the one small caveat is to that. So. I didn't take the thing, so maybe Allison can, oh, never mind, shut up here. Okay, so. So I nailed the first slide without looking at it as my crutch. I wanted to go department by department. So. Community development, which is our planning and building divisions, is definitely going on track in the general fund. So in their primary operating budget. Right in line with what we would expect, their fee revenues, creating the level of offsets we would expect. We're really pleased about that. They've had to bring in some consultants to supplement some work that needed to be done and the fact that we've been experiencing vacancies. So to offset that, though, are the savings that are being realized because we program the budget with the anticipation of having in-house staff. So the net in in that department right now is looking like they're spot-on and they'll be fine. Community services, so that's our library and our recreation operations, tracking very nicely. On budget, so we're really pleased with where that's going. I am going to be bringing you formally in the next meeting or two, a significant change. Although I had great optimism and it's not that long ago, I told you everything looked great for the community services model. We're in a period of transition with some of our staff and that's always an opportunity to debrief and the more we looked at. What's happening in community services, we're finding that. The pull from the community and the things they want from the two divisions are not aligned very well for one director to handle. And so. We really think we need two managers and the divisions need to be bifurcated again. So I'll be bringing you a formal proposal to. Restore the model we had before and have two directors, one for library and one for recreation. We should be able to do that with nominal budget effect because of the way we've programmed the community services budget. So I'll be bringing all those numbers at a future meeting and how that might affect this year's budget. We have had to bring extra part-time help in in the library during this period of transition, but because of vacancies, again, we've had. The resources available to do that. I'm pleased to announce, so the apologize on the starting date, I have in my head, it's next week, we'll be having a new librarian on board. So one of our vacancies will be filled. That's really exciting. Just all of our positions, it's taken a little longer to find folks. And particularly. This person does happen to be a Marin-based person, so they're very familiar with our library and I think that was an attraction and. One thing I've learned in my touching the library, right now, we are very attractive because it's a heck of a lot of fun and exciting to hear you might actually build something. So the fact that we have a funded new building makes us a very attractive opportunity. So we're going to really milk that. For all it's worth. Administration, we haven't had any significant fluctuations. I do want to acknowledge that you give me the latitude each year of a contingency fund to deal with. Unexpected costs. You know, if if a community group comes and and that's one we've typically supported in the past, that's the sort of thing we charge to the contingency fund. Redwood High School, for example, we're talking with them about some ideas that we think are some nice partnerships to do some promotion. Wasn't programmed in the budget, well within that contingency fund. That's the type of thing we do. There's seventy-five thousand there, but I've never, I think the whole time I've been here, I've never spent the whole contingency fund, so it's always been available to bottom-line. The admin budget. And I want to emphasize, I'm talking about the budgets of the department separately because I try to have the department heads. Keep their budgets bottom-lined within the department, but we can cross, we can go across departments. So there are years I see that one department is going to. we can cross, we can go across departments. So there are years I see that one department is going to end up in the red, and another department's getting up in the black, and we're going to wash. Okay, so I you'll see one department's missing from this list. So when we go to the next page, this is a rare meeting where Julian Skinner is not here from Public Works. We so we'll tease him a little bit. He's the one department causing us anything of a significant thought process in terms of midyear. But frankly, for public works, these are very small numbers. So not surprisingly, we incurred costs because of the storms. What's fantastic this year is it's mostly overtime to the staff to be out in the field during the storms, dealing with down trees and debris. We didn't have significant one time damages from the storms, at least not on public property. That's rare. Let's hope that continues. We are hopeful that all of the costs we incurred are FEMA recoverable, since it was declared a state of emergency for that event. So when I said there's one caveat in all this list, that's the caveat. There's forty five thousand, I think FEMA is going to pay for. I'm hoping they'll pay for. If they don't, we'll figure out a way to deal with forty five thousand dollars. The other thing, we ended up changing our janitorial service, and we've retained tree services to do more work than we anticipated. That's running us much higher. But again, Julian Skinner and I talked about this, his budget has the capacity to deal with this. So I'm fairly confident we won't have any problem absorbing that increase. And then lastly, not surprisingly, they have a wish list of of purchases. Unlike some years past, there's not a a large vehicle or significant caterpillar branded tool to be purchased. So this year, their requests are pretty modest, twenty four thousand, primarily a trailer that they'd like to use. So we should be able to absorb all of that. So again, really testament, I think mostly to Kathy as your admin services director. She's the one, and it's already starting for next fiscal year. She's the one that has to herd the cats and get them all to fill out all their Excel spreadsheets so that she can project out the budget and and in fact, I think you were for budget purposes, Kathy was the community services director for this fiscal year because Elise was so new. You know, Kathy was basically using her best judgment of years past to help inform those decisions, and we were we were spot on. So that's pretty good. That's really it. I did want I've mentioned. I've mentioned some vacancies, so I wanted to highlight them because you programmed, you authorized vacancies, positions that we haven't been able to fill. When you're doing a midyear budget adjustment, that's a wonderful thing, right? There's money to be used. It's, but it is a stressor. It's a stressor for our staff to be covering these vacancies, even if we outsource. An outsourced person's not trained with all the nuances of working in Larkspur. So we've had challenges in the library. It's why I'm so excited. We have another librarian in. We'll be looking for a librarian director, a library director soon. The other Public Works has a inspector position funded. We've been outsourcing that. We'd really like to bring that in house. There's a lot of work for a public works inspector to do in Larkspur. We could program the person probably more than a hundred percent time if we if we wanted to drive them insane. Because it's just constantly busy there. And then the council knows one of our long term goals is to bring our building division in house. We do a lot of outsourcing right now in the building division. And that has two challenges for us. One is that again, that local feel to dealing with every all activity that's going on in the community. Our contractors do a great job, but we think with an in-house resource, we'd get a little more bang for our buck in that regard. And then the other thing is, just like everywhere else, we're anticipating turnover in our contractors firm and we don't know what the future holds with that particular group of people. And so having some certainty by bringing that in house is something that's very attractive to us right now. Those are the big ticket vacancies that are allowing us right now to cover all these modest expenditures that we didn't plan for. And we will continue to recruit aggressively. Right now, you wouldn't necessarily see any advertising because we're working on some rebranding to try to make our employment a little more attractive. It's a great opportunity for me to thank the council again that you've been very generous to me and to our employee groups to talk about ways to make working in Larkspur attractive and as a place to be. And the various programs we're using, we're probably, I really think we might be the most aggressive city in Marin in embracing the the work at home, work in the office balance. And that's a testament to the tools you've allowed us to purchase. I have a feeling a lot of folks don't realize when one of our people are working at home and and engaging them because of the tools we have at our disposal. And I know in because we we do debrief on hires, I know some of the hires we've done recently. That was the tipping point for our selecting us over some of the other options that they had available to them. And you've also worked very hard with me and with the Employee Association, and we have a contract in place that is sustainable financially, but gives the employees comfort that they can cope with some of the inflationary factors that everybody's dealing with. And the fact that a lot of our employees have to commute into Larkspur. And so very appreciative of that. I also want to acknowledge our employee association is very generous in the sense that they negotiate with us in one fiscal year and agree that all the impacts can start in the next fiscal year, and not every city gets to enjoy that. So it's another reason you're not seeing me bringing you big ticket numbers right after negotiating a contract because they've agreed that the vast majority of the expenditures that are associated with that contract don't kick in until July one. Kathy is here, and she is the brainsy outfit, and she has her computer with her because you might have questions, and we'd be happy to, if you have questions about anything budget related that you wanted to bring up, she can get you the dollar amounts that in real time. That's one of the nifty things, and one of those tools that we've invested in is we run real time data on our our financial system. So with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for that, Dan. That's, yeah, let's see. Do any of the council members have any any comments or thought? Go.
Kathy, I just want to say thank you. I I'm not a big thank you person, but you know, this is the most complicated part of running the city is the finances, and it's been so easy and so smooth for us because of all the hard work that you and your staff do. And we are, I treat myself, I'm just so grateful. So I just want to say thank you. That's it.
Can I, I'm gonna, can I tip mayor, Mr. Mayor? I want to echo that because I've been in this role now nine years, and every year gets better as far as providing information to the public and providing trans I don't like that word transparency, but clarity in our financial situations and forms and documents that are easier to read. As a person who entered this role with not a finance background, it has gotten a lot clearer. And I think that's a testament to sort of just the work that you've put into it and your staff put into it to make it accessible and readable to people who are not from a finance background. So I I just think every year gets better and better. Thank you. And I know this is your last year, so. I I hope that our public can also, because one of the things I've often said is when people ask for the city small like ours is with a very tight budget to do something that they want us to spend money on. And I often said, here's the budget, here's the budget book, show me where the to find the money. And it's it's an accessible budget book for a lot of people that has gotten better over the years to see that that there isn't a lot of fluff here and there that we can pull money from. It's very specifically allocated. So that's, I don't have any questions about this. This is a really nice overview of of where we stand.
It does take a village to do all the work and and put the budget book together. I'm don't stand alone. I have a lot of help. So it I will pass all the comments and along. Thank you very much. If there is any other questions, if you're looking something up or let me know.
Councilmember Kevin and Kevin.
In fifty years, I've been an employee, a shop steward, a union trustee, where I had to negotiate from the labor side, then I went management. And now I'm an owner of a company. And the one thing I always took comfort in was that the finance officer showed up and didn't phone it in from Brazil. The reports, I've I've been reading your reports over the last three years, and even I can, looking through it, understand the complexity of it. I mean, I can't get into the weeds. But of all the reports I've seen, it is very clearly labeled, very understandable. At the Cal Cities Conference, I happened to sit next to a new council member from another city in our county. And we were just discussing an issue, and I pulled up one of your warrants actually for one of our meetings because I was just pointing out how detailed it was. And she was there with a friend who is an accountant. And they just marveled at it. They said, God, we don't get this information from our finance people, how well it was broken down by department and then by costs and under what kind of service. And I just don't, well, you know, just got to hire the right people. So thank you, anyone who was involved in hiring the right person. It's been quite an honor to to read your reports. You're in big shoes to fill, but thank you.
Councilmember Harof.
Yes, just just briefly, and and I'll avoid the temptation to pile on. But I do want to make sure Kathy, you know that I share in the expressions of gratitude that my colleagues on the council have already offered. Same thing every year, you and your staff with the support of our city manager do a terrific job. Makes the administration of the city a model for everyone else in Marin and beyond to elevate over. So thank you, and please convey our collective thanks to everyone who's contributed to the success of your enterprise.
Thank you. Yeah. And then Kathy, I, you know, I think I just want to say ditto to everybody, but I'll try to one up them. So I'll give you a a David Letterman's top eight list of why like Kathy. So item one, staying on track in twenty twenty three. Number two, staying on track during COVID. Number three, all the Badawi audits, you know, and they they deep dive and, you know. Then I I really did want to dig in, and and we, even on the meeting on Tuesday, went into the reserve policy and, you know, seeing, you know, the different complexities, you know, of of what that means, you think there's a pot of money, but then there's cash flow considerations. So, you know, to to do that. And then the investment policy, I mean, that's again, something that we don't really think about, and that you're doing this laddered approach now. And and I I'm very happy about that because we're not in COVID, we're in high interest land. So so that's much appreciated. And the entire pooled cash approach that you pull off so well with Central Marin included. And then last but not least, on my top ten list, the budget book. It's really a hit. So I I want to thank you, and I think we've all, we all really appreciate you. So thank you.
Since I didn't realize this would become a love fest, I thought I'd share because I'm meeting. You know, sadly, for me, Kathy has correctly chosen to retire and go enjoy life at the end of the year. I'm actually talking to the recruiter on Thursday, and I know that they'll ask me sort of, you know, what's a criteria criterion for hiring next person? Is it? And what I think works so well in our dynamic in Larkspur is invariably, the department heads come to me and they say, I really, really want to spend some money on X. And I'll say, well, what did Kathy say? Well, she said no. And then, you know, and so then my job is to hear them out and decide if I'm going to expend some energy trying to convince Kathy to say yes. So that's kind of, that's worked really well for us. Thank you for being the no person. So I could be the maybe person which has worked really well for us. So I just thought I'd share that.
Thank you. So Kathy, again, thanks. And with that, we will certainly be seeing you more in the budget season in April. So we're, we know we're in good hands. Thanks again.
We should probably take some public comment.
Okay, yeah, sure. Is there anybody? Oh, we have in the chamber, please, if you could come up to the if you want to come up to the mic and just where you live and who you are.
My name's Kristen, and I live in, actually, I live in Cordera, but I also own in Larkspur. Nice to meet you, Kathy. This, it's actually related to the budget and the MCE presentation that was earlier. I'm, I was wondering during that presentation, do we have a line item in our budget that is pertaining to sustainability grants? Or just sustainable offsets and and costs that the city can support? Because if we understand it's only like roughly five dollars a person per bill, then maybe something the the council can explore is some type of grant that helps individuals get their foot into the door into that deep green. But I didn't know if there's a line item in the budget that addresses sustainability and environmental. I don't remember. There was a beautiful chart that I saw yesterday, but I don't remember the chart.
So sustainability in our budget book isn't called out by a line item. So we we do it two ways. So we have staff whose responsibility is sustainability programs that that, among many other things they do, and those staff would be found and and they're associated. But money that they have available to them would be in the administration portion of the budget because they work under me. And then what we do is special dedicated monies and a lot of what comes through to support sustainability are monies we've gone out and solicited to pass through to our community. Those usually get booked outside the operational general fund. They get booked specially so we can sunshine them for folks. I don't think we currently have any sustainability monies other than the Transportation Authority Marin provides all the cities with monies to do promotional material to promote sustainability efforts. It's not enough money to contemplate a grant type program. For us, it runs roughly fifty ish a year, fifty thousand a year. So we tend to invest it in collaborations with other cities to do promotional activities.
Do other cities have line items in their budgets for sustainability?
Some of them do because some of them run Fairfax that was mentioned, the MCE program runs a full sustainability operation. So you, I haven't looked in their budget, but I'm going to suspect they actually call out that cost because they've they've chosen to do that. I don't think any city in Marin probably has the means to say, here's a dedicated amount of money in an account to to use on sustainability. It's almost always going to be in a programmatic budget. So I'd be happy to spend some time talking about this more with you offline. But if you're interested in what cities are doing with sustainability, Fairfax is a good example. They usually in our in our region are a little farther ahead of everybody else and trying new things. And then Sandra Fell probably, I know they have a sustainability person, so they probably have a program if I looked into their budget, too.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question. Alison, do we have anybody in the in Zoom?
We do have some attendees, and I'm looking for any raised hands from our Zoom audience members. There is no public comment.
Okay, great. So seeing no public comment, I think we can conclude our agenda item number eight. And the next item is closed session, and I the the item is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. And we will go into closed session and then come back with any reportable items or actions. I did want to just go through the adjournment, you know, which I'll repeat when we come back for the benefit, you know, most people or many people do not return. So the special meeting that the city manager mentioned is February do not return. So the, um, special meeting that, uh, the city manager mentioned is February eighth and that that will be about just cause eviction. And then we have our next regular meeting to Wednesdays from today on February fifteenth. And I also wanted to adjourn the meeting in honor of Phil Riley. Uh, you know, so I, I think, um, city manager might've been Kathy Hartzell or somebody who brought this to, I think both our attention, but uh, he, he passed away in twenty twenty-two and was a beloved resident of Larkspur, someone who mentored a lot of people. And, uh, I, I quote here, Dutch uncle to many is in the Chronicle. And so in honor of Phil, uh, I'd like to, to pre-adjourn. And then when we come back, I'll just repeat that message. So, if that's it, we're ready for closed session and we'll come back when, uh, with any actions.
Are we carrying, uh, are we? Alison, do I need to have a Zoom link?